I might as well just say standing up.
Nothing yet?
Just this.
Can I trip over something?
Basically.
We can like try to do a hangman.
Yeah, exactly.
If I'm hanging here, it's okay. Let me go.
Good evening to you all. If you would be so kind as to have a seat, please, and get ready for our meeting to begin. I'd like to call our meeting to order. Welcome to the Monday, October 22, 2018, Meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted you all are here with us this evening. I would ask if you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and as your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, will you call roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Conley?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Z?
Here.
And Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Do we have a motion regarding the meeting agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the meeting agenda.
And do we have a second?
Second.
All right. I'll call Ms. Hardy on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, abstentions, the ayes, have it. All right. So let's go on. We've got several special proclamations this evening. We are very fortunate. The first one is regarding Live Local Month, and Mr. Lichtenhouse is going to do the honors. Mr. Lichtenhouse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas the City of Falls Church is proud to join with the Falls Church Chamber of Commerce to encourage residents to take the Live Local pledge and patronize local businesses in Falls Church, and whereas local businesses in the Falls Church Chamber of Commerce are challenging residents and businesses to pledge to keep 20 percent more of their spending in the City of Falls Church during the month of November 2018, and whereas living local creates prosperity because of the multiplier effect when local people choose to buy products and services from local businesses, creating diverse job opportunities and strengthening the city's overall economy, and whereas shopping, eating, playing, creating, and doing business in the city adds to the local tax revenue base which supports city schools, roads, and other city services, and whereas living local can be healthier for the environment because doing business locally often results in less traffic congestion and pollution, and whereas living local can be healthier for residents because it makes daily activities less stressful and encourages walking to local businesses, and whereas living local supports neighbors and local businesses while also building stronger relationships and a sense of community, and whereas living local helps to strengthen and preserve the fabric of Falls Church's unique business community while attracting new businesses to serve local residents and the community at large.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2018 as Live Local Month in the City of Falls Church, and urge all citizens to take the Live Local pledge, attend some of the many Live Local events offered by local businesses during the month, and participate in the hashtag #LiveLocalFC campaign by tagging local businesses and events on social media. Do we have anyone from the Chamber, the community? Mr. Painter? And Mr. Laporta?
All right, we've got the whole gang here. Yeah, come on up, everyone. Let's hear more about it.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. I'm Sally Cole, the Director of the Falls Church Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here with several Chamber representatives. Andrew Painter with Walsh Kalushy, Kathy Salties with the Falls Church Chamber, Emily Jenkins with Geller Law Group, and Mozy Shaw with Cordy Realty. Thank you for this proclamation. Thank you also to City Clerk Celeste Heath for drafting it, and to Vice Mayor Mary Beth Conley for sharing her hashtag challenge idea with us. We are most especially grateful to Councilmember Lichtenhouse for initiating and cultivating this proclamation, and for his encouragement and guidance that helped the Chamber create a promotion to support it. As a result, we developed our Live Local Falls Church challenge, hashtag #LiveLocalFC. Through November, the Chamber will be challenging businesses and residents to keep 20 percent more of their spending in Falls Church, and to share their spending via social media. This is more than a shop local or dine local program. It encourages people to also visit local healthcare professionals, fitness facilities, attorneys, realtors, financial advisors, builders, tutors, accountants, and creative venues. To participate, businesses and residents can visit our hashtag #LiveLocalFC Facebook, Instagram, or Twitter pages. Join the challenge by typing hashtag #LiveLocalFC and tagging at least three friends. Take selfies and other photos in local businesses, post them with the #LiveLocalFC hashtag, and tag the business. For every post, participants will secure a chance to win weekly prizes such as the ability to create and name a signature cocktail at Dogwood Tavern, a coffee at Cafe Kindred, and a beer at Mad Fox Brewing Company. Additionally, we are hoping that Council will agree to a photo with the business leaders and residents who post the most #LiveLocal hashtags during the campaign. While the challenge is open to all local businesses, the Chamber will provide its members with campaign instructions for their use and their customers' information, hashtag #LiveLocalFC tent cards for use in photos, social media frames, and use of a giant frame to use at special pop-up events. The #LiveLocal hashtag campaign will be promoted through the Falls Church News Press, Chamber emails and social media, community influencers, social media, and these handy little cellphone Our objective is to raise awareness of the benefits of spending locally and to increase sales for our local business community. We hope you all will join us and become social media influencers yourselves. Thank you again for this proclamation and for your ongoing support of our local business community. We have more information and a cellphone wallet in these folders for each of you. Hashtag #LiveLocalFC.
May I?
You may.
So while we're waiting, my question for the Chamber is, can you solve the parking issue with Northside Social?
We've asked Councilmember Letty Hardy to deal with that.
All right, would you guys like to come up for a photo?
We would love to, thank you.
All right, let's do that. Let's do it.
Passing the frame off to you, fearless leader.
Yeah, we can do a bunch of.
No, just stay in there.
All right, let's get one with the frame. Let's be in the frame.
Thank you all very much. Our next proclamation is regards to Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and Vice Mayor Conley will do the honors.
This is a proclamation declaring October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy and dignity, security, and humanity, and whereas the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any one group of people or strata of society but affect everyone and are perpetuated by indifference, and whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole, and whereas compassionate and dedicated law enforcement personnel, victim advocates, healthcare providers, clergy, and concerned citizens strive to end domestic violence, and whereas domestic violence awareness challenges all citizens to actively participate in increasing public understanding of the toxicity of the problem and work toward improving victim safety while also holding offenders accountable for their actions.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Falls Church, and urge all citizens to observe this month by becoming more aware of the impact of domestic violence on the community and by supporting agencies like Homestretch that work to break the cycle of abuse by providing shelter and compassion for families in need.
Do we have anyone from the community as the chief here by chance to receive this proclamation? Mr. Shields, do you know?
We do not have the chief here. I'd be happy to receive it, though, on behalf of the City Police Department, and we will show this proclamation.
Okay, do we have any oaths of office to administer, Madam Clerk?
No, sir, we're caught up.
All right. Before we go to public comment, which we will be doing momentarily, and we do have a lot of speakers particularly who want to address Big Chimneys Park, before we get to that, I'm going to ask Mr. Shields to give us an update that might be informative to folks who might want to speak this evening. I would say that, at least in my mind, there's never been any question about building Big Chimneys Park. The issue has been that the park is over budget for various reasons, some of that is due to stormwater and some other things. And so, to my mind, the issue's been, how do we pay for it? How do we come up with the money? As you know, we have a very ambitious CIP program that's very expensive, and so we have to make sure we find a way to pay for all the good things we want to do. And so, that really, I think, has been the challenge, but not the question of whether the park will get built or not. But, Mr. Shields, could you give us an update for Council and for the public?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of Council. At the work session last week, the Wreckin Parks Advisory Board came to the City Council along with the project manager, Kim Callahan, to give you an update on the project. As you'll recall, the project has a $1 million budget. We've gone through an extensive design process with a lot of community input, and I think the scope and the design of the park is well-vetted, supported by the community, supported by the Wreckin Parks Advisory Board. So the issue is that our project manager does have cost estimates, and the costs are $1.35 million, or $350,000 above the original budget. We do know from experience that Ms. Callahan is very good at cost estimating. She has a very strong track record in this, and we take these estimates. They are just estimates at this point. We need to go out to bid, but it is really important information for the planning of the project. So with that, we have a $350,000 funding gap. Since that, really, over the last couple of months, but really in the last week, we've been working with the City Finance Department to consider options. As you noted, we have a lot of CIP projects, and so this is, A, it's a lot of money, and we recognize that, you know, a lot of our projects might have overruns, and we're working very hard to deliver our projects on budget. That's the main effort that we're trying to make. In this park project, I think a lot of that work has already happened. There've already been multiple rounds of making decisions to try to bring the project within an affordable scope. And so we have been looking for additional funds. One thing that actually happened in the last week is that the city received an additional, a second installment of the payment for a property that was sold in 2013, and it was a two-payment arrangement for that. The proceeds from that sale are not budgeted. The payment that was received for the city was $235,000. In our exploring of options, that is one option that we intend to come to Council with as a possible way to increase the funding for the project. But again, we recognize that this is, you know, our funds are tight. We need to manage our dollars very prudently and wisely, and so we'll present Council with several options. But I guess what I want to report tonight is, we are working the problem, and so if there is consensus from Council to continue with that work, we'll bring you options at your next work session on ways that we can close the funding gap.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Shields at this time? Mr. Snyder?
I guess the work session last week was the first time I heard about the absence of progress on this project, so I think our citizens are here. I think it's an issue of credibility for the government. I think we need to get this done, and I think we need to find the money. So I'm very pleased with the fact that we have this additional payment. I think that should significantly narrow the gap, but I think we've got to get going with this. I think there's a clear expectation among our citizens that we act, and I think we must. Thank you.
All right. So we do have some speakers, a number of speaker slips which I'm going to get to momentarily. Before we get to that, we're going to have a summary of written comments by the clerk.
Yes, we had several comments from Winter Hill residents regarding the Big Chimneys Park renovations in support of completing those. Deborah Smith of 253 Gundry Drive, Dee Ellison of 298 Gundry Drive, Diane Bartley, 331 James Street, and Claire Dunn all wrote in support of those renovations. And we did have two letters in support of requiring coal ash cleanup, and they were from Donald Tucker at 200 North Maple Avenue and Stephen Vogel at 449 Hampton Court. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we're going to move on to public comments. A number of you have filled out speaker slips. I've got them in my hands. If anyone else wants to speak but has not yet filled out a speaker slip, I would ask you at this time to go ahead and fill one out, hand them to the clerk, and then she'll hand them up to me. When you do get up to speak, if you could state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to three minutes so we can get through everyone's comments at a reasonable hour. And we will go ahead and get started then. So our first speaker is Dennis Semansky.
I live at 915 Hillwood Avenue, and this evening I'm here as Chairman of the Tree Commission and also representing the Board of the Village Preservation and Improvement Society. Before you and in the back of the room, we have this booklet. Trees in the City of Falls Church is an update to the 1990 booklet that the Village Society produced. The current effort is a collaborative one involving the Village Society, the City Arborist, and the Tree Commission, funded by Vipus. You'll see it has updated information on the tree inventory in the city, color photos, information on the neighborhood tree program, the tree labeling program, both of which were supported by Vipus in the past. Copies are available in the library. We'll have them available at the farmer's market and here in the community center. Any questions?
Any questions?
Oh, and I, one last thing. The creative genius behind this, the layout, and all the really hard work belongs to Lori Clark, who is a Falls Church City resident.
Quite good. The book is quite nice. Ms. Wright, did you want to say anything as well? You're next on the speaker.
Actually, I have one more thing.
But, yeah, I have kind of a separate topic.
Okay, separate topic. Okay, sorry.
So now, as Chairman of the Tree Commission, you know, in our advocacy, we had discovered the last couple of years that Tree Commission really doesn't adequately address all those things that we really advocate for here in the city. It doesn't allow us to really, in terms of our mission, address things like woody plants and native plants. And so we've started an effort to, with Kate's support, to formally rename the Tree Commission the Urban Forestry Council. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that we'll be in the process of doing that.
Sounds good. Any questions or comments? Mr. Duncan?
Just, Dennis, on the way in, we were talking about where the count comes for the trees, so I see in the fine print here, it says, "The list shows only the most common trees along streets and on public property." So this is just a portion. This doesn't reflect trees on private property.
Correct.
So, okay, so that's a, it's a bigger number even. Okay, that's a great book. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Oh, Mr. Z, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I do thank you for this booklet. I recall that the earlier versions were in black and white for some reason, but this is very nice, very pretty, and, well, maybe green and white, but I think it's time that we recognize the importance of all that this commission does, and I'm glad that they're thinking of renaming it to reflect the kind of effort that we want to take on in this city. I also want to say that as the incoming Chair of the Washington Metropolitan Council of Government's Climate, Energy, and Environmental Policy Committee for next year, that I want to do three things, and the top one on the list is trees. Trees for us, trees in our region, and for all 29 jurisdictions. And the fact that we're able to have a conversation about trees, not only on public but also on private lands in the upcoming year, I think is reflective of how far we've come in the maturity of this region. I look forward to working with all of you, in particular you, Dennis, and Kate Wright, and the Urban Forester, in making the city an example of progress in that area. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And before we move on, we do have a couple other chairmanships that are chairpersonships. Vice Mayor Mary Beth Conley is going to be the Chair of the Region Ford for the Council of Government next year, which is the leading economic development body for COG, which is a very big deal, so congratulations on that. And Mr. Snyder as well, as Chair of an NVTA, Northern Virginia Transportation Authority Subcommittee or Committee on Technology. I don't know, what's the exact name, Mr. Snyder?
That's close enough.
Okay. All right. So congratulations to you both. Falls Church has got a high profile, indeed. All right, our next speaker is Ms. Wright. Are you okay?
Yes.
Your arm, all right?
Yep, I'm fine, thanks. So I think everyone on the Council and a lot of citizens are aware how important urban forestry is to Falls Church. We've had a city arborist since like 19, the early 1980s, I think. We were the first Tree City USA in Virginia, and I think that importance was reflected in staff some years ago, and with economic downturns, we kind of got cut back. Mike Whitfield, Director of Public Works, has recognized how important urban forestry is to us, and I have not been able to keep up with all the tasks involved. So just me, I've been doing all of the plan review, all of the management, or, excuse me, all of the inspection and ordering of management of the city-owned trees, but there's enforcement, there's community outreach, all kinds of things that fall off the table. So we've been allowed to add another person, and I'd like to introduce Charles Prince. We've hired Charles to be our new urban forester to support me in my work. Charles comes to us actually from our Operations Division. He's been with the city for 12 years already, so I think a lot of you are probably familiar with him. He knows how Falls Church works. He knows how we do things, and he's very skilled in urban forestry. He's been a certified arborist for a long time and also has tree risk assessment qualifications, great customer service, so we're very happy to have him. I just wanted you to welcome him and his transfer into his new position, and in addition to inspections, we're hoping to train him to cover for me when I'm absent and to do whatever he's interested in so that we can be a team, so that our level of customer service stays high. But thank you. Please welcome Charles.
Thank you. Welcome, and congratulations on your promotion. All right. Thanks again.
And Mayor Tarter, could I just make a quick comment as well? A, congratulations, Charles, on this, but I also just wanted to note that Kate injured herself on Saturday at a neighborhood tree planting event here in the City of Falls Church, so it was in the line of duty. But thank you for all your work during normal business hours and on the weekends as well here in the city. And just one other note for the Council. I know you're always looking at the budget. This position was created in Public Works through the work of Mike Whitfield, working with Finance, and so it's not an actual increase in FDEs or an increase in the budget for Public Works, but it's an internal reorganization based on this need. So I just wanted to note that as well. Thank you.
All right. Congratulations. Thank you. All right. Our next speakers are Heather and Ethan Pressler. Welcome. Thanks for coming out.
Hi, this is my first visit to town council, so I should probably come back again. My name's Heather Pressler, and this is Ethan Pressler, and we are residents at 208 West Annandale Road. For noting on the map, we are right next to Big Chimney Park. We came tonight because we saw that you were talking about the budgeting and the scheduling of renovating the park. Ethan here, he does not really play in the park very much, so probably only two times this summer did he play in the park, and I wanted him to explain why he hasn't played in the park.
Actually, pull the mic down. That might be easier.
It's kind of small, and there's not a lot of stuff to play on.
And what would you like to see at the park?
Like me, I want it to be like Cherry Hill Park.
Yeah, so he really likes what you did with Cherry Hill Park. And also TJ. TJ's new place, play place is really awesome with the Spider-Man. One thing, spider web, sorry, spider web. One thing I would like to note is that, you know, I've been a resident of the city for about four years now. I'm a small business owner in this city as well. One thing is that I think our parks are phenomenal, especially with a lot of the changes that we've been making, and I think Big Chimney does not stand up to the other parks that we have. In town, it doesn't have as many uses right now. It doesn't even really have many places you can sit as a resident. And final words or thoughts? Ethan is a type 1 diabetic, so he can't go very far from home because he could have a medical emergency, and so having a park nearby that he could use would be, make our lives a lot easier. And I know just in the row of townhouses that we represent, there's seven children just in those townhouses that can walk to that park. So it makes a big difference for us that while they're still little, because in a year, you know, he's starting to get to that phase already where he's telling me, back talking to me, but in a year or so, he may not want to use that park. So the sooner we can get it renovated, the better. So I appreciate your thoughts, and definitely I'll do anything to support, you know, where we can use some of the extra funds maybe to finish the project. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Ethan, would you like a badge, a button?
Oh.
What'd you say, buddy? Nice job, both of you all. All right, our next speaker is Lana Murav.
Almost.
I haven't got there. I haven't finished it yet. I'm trying to decide whether to make that W of V sound or a...
Your first instinct was right.
All right, Murav Vaisak?
Murav here.
Okay, well, I was halfway close. Thank you. Welcome. Sorry for the...
Well, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, and citizens, I'm here to support the Big Chimney Park project. It's wonderful to do something for our children, and I think that's one of the biggest commitments that Falls Church has. And it has been a wonderful place. I've been living here for 18 years, and I know some of you, and I am, I'm happy to hear Mr. Shields' message tonight that there is another glimmer of hope, and I'm looking forward to seeing this be done as quickly as it can, and that's what I wanted to say.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming out. Our next speaker is Diane Bartley. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. Diane Bartley, 331 James Street, and I'm also mother of Paige Bartley. That's okay, we're not going to, we're not going to make you talk. And as many of you know, I'm an active member of the Winter Hill community... And, as many of you know, I'm an active member of the Winter Hill community. It's a pleasure to see you all. I just want to take a moment to thank you. I know, I just have a glimpse of how many hours and what you're putting into this position, and we really appreciate it. So, I know I often come before you to ask for things, but I also wanted to say thank you. It's tremendously beneficial, and we're very appreciative. So many projects, so much to do. Many of you know that the park renovation, the Big Chimneys Park renovation, was promised to our community a number of years ago as part of the Harris Teeter renovation, and unfortunately, we're still waiting for that promise to be met. And so, I think that Mr. Snyder's comments initially were spot-on. There's a, you know, a bunch of folks in the room, and, you know, a lot of people here who are saying, "Harris Teeter opened two years ago, and yet we still don't have our park." It's, you know, it was July of 2016. Actually, I looked it up today, when the grand opening was, and yet, still, we're here, and we can't really play in the park, and, you know, we're still sort of waiting for the full funding. I think it's also important to see this park not just as a park. I mean, it's critical to have a green space for all ages, but it's also an essential pedestrian link. We talk a lot about walkability, and we talk a lot about multimodal transport, and yet you have this pedestrian link that abuts one of the most densely populated neighborhoods in the entire city, connects it up to the new development on Broad Street, and connects it to all of the new development in Pearson Square and Tanner Hill, and yet, right now, it's this rickety, you know, you're tripping over tree roots, it's not lighted at night. You know, this, again, it's a lot more than a park. It really is this essential, you know, conduit and essential part of the transportation infrastructure, and I think we have to look at that as well. I think we've also done a good job as a city of prioritizing safety, and again, the pieces that are, you know, in question, if we only partially funded the park renovation and stuck to the million dollars without finding the additional $350,000, it's not just the lighting, but it's also removing that berm. And I've sat in many, many meetings with our very hard-working Rec and Parks Department and their designers, and, you know, I've been participating in this process for quite some time, and folks have made it very clear that the only way that police can actually see into the park as they drive by is if that berm on Annandale Road, West Annandale Road, is lowered, so that as a police cruiser drives by, they can look and they can see what's going on within that park. So, I think it really is just essential for the, you know, the safety and the proper functioning of that park, that those items not be seen as, you know, something that we can just do at some date later in the future. And finally, just, you know, given the overall climate, and, you know, we're really up on all the projects that are going on, and we fully understand the financial, you know, commitments and expenses that the city is taking on, but I think we've all been in a situation where, you know, maybe you have a renovation to do with your home, and you could do the cheap way, and then you'd have to redo it, or you could just do it right the first time, and I think that's what we're asking for here. And I think I'm out of time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hey, Kate, do you want a button? Is Kate? Paige, I'm sorry, Paige. You, Paige? All right, you want a button? All right, there you go. Thanks. All right, our next speaker, I hope I get your name right, Jane Hoser, is that right?
Close, Hoser.
Okay, welcome.
All right, hi, I'm Jane Hoser. I live at 223 South Virginia Avenue, so I'm a resident of Winter Hill as well, coming here to support full funding of Big Chimneys Park renovations, and particularly from a, I'm drawing on a professional background, actually. Professionally, I'm the Assistant Director of Operations and Analysis at the Human Intelligence Group, and I hold the professional, physical security professional and professional certified investigator certifications from ASIS International, which is the largest professional organization of securities, security practitioners in the world. So, I have spent years familiarizing myself with the standards and guidelines, theory, peer-reviewed, published research of the security and crime prevention industry. So, it's from that background that I would in particular like to urge you to consider lighting Big Chimneys to be non-optional. Lighting is basically, it's a necessary component of a reasonable safety and security program. So, between my bookshelves and my digital library, I have probably dozens and dozens of comprehensive references on physical security measures, and I can't think of one that would not talk about lighting. So, in the language of crime prevention through environmental design, lighting supports legitimate use of the space by attracting users who want to see and be seen, and when you forego lighting, you may risk attracting users who do not want to be seen. So, lighting acts as a crime deterrent by supporting natural surveillance, which is the ability of people within the space to see their surroundings, as well as the ability of people outside the space to see in, such as the police cruisers driving by. This supports what we call witness potential, which is, it increases the risks to potential offenders by increasing the likelihood that they would be observed and identified if they choose to offend. So, as a resident, I also wanted to thank you for all the work that you do for the city, and thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you very much for coming out this evening. We appreciate it. Our next speaker is our former mayor, Nader Baruk. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's a pleasure to be here before you. I wanted to thank you. I know how difficult your jobs are, especially when it comes to money, and especially when you've got a large group of folks coming to you asking for money. But I think what this is really about is, some of my Winter Hill neighbors mentioned, we're two years out from Harris Teeter opening, and during that time, there was a lot of promises made to the community, one about the revenue that the project was going to bring, and also some decisions and sacrifices that the community needed to take on, such as traffic issues, more density. But there was also benefits to that, and one of them that was held out and included actually some proffers was getting the park done, and we're two years out, and certainly there's been shortfalls, et cetera. But also, when you look at the funding for the park, you'll also notice that a large chunk of the money is actually going to storm water management on the site. And like most of our parks, that's why the parks are there, is because they are in low-lying areas that tend to get pretty wet. And what we've seen with the park design is, with the increased need to actually make it a functional park by putting in more and more infrastructure dealing with the storm water to make it actually a usable park, the features that make it a park, a park, like the playground equipment, pavilions, removing the berms, making it much more of an entry feature, have been reduced, which I think is sort of is an shame of what's happened, but I think that's kind of the reality of the parcel that's there. So, I think if you look at the conceptual project as a whole, it kind of went from being a true pocket park, really to invigorate the city, and it's been reduced and reduced and reduced. And now, we're talking about taking out things like lighting, which I think are a non-starter for some of the safety issues that we've talked about. Sure, you can probably penny pinch on some of the playground equipment, but I think the lighting is one of the key aspects, and it has to still have the features that make it a park. The other thing that I also wanted to touch upon tonight is the pedestrian walkability. I think that that area's been neglected as far as what we're doing with pedestrian improvements, and I think I've been in a near-hit accident with Mia Grace, my daughter, who's five, on the stop sign, which has yet to really be configured in a way that's meaningful. And I know that there were some funds that were supposed to be going in to making that much more walkable, and I think there needs to be a pedestrian-friendly way of approaching Harris Teeter that's in a much better situation than it is now, and also linking it to South Maple and the Tanner Hill neighborhood as well. I think those are, those are key things that I think the council and the city are going to need to tackle to really make this a usable park and really link the city. So, I thank you for all your efforts, and best of luck in your decisions.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your service tonight, too. Do you think Mia Grace would like a pin as well? Is that her asleep over there? Are you awake? No?
She's out.
All right, that's fine. That's fine, okay. All right, our next speakers are Ed, Julia, and Nick Gray. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Edward Gray. I live at 169 West Annandale Road, and I brought along my eight-year-old son Nicholas and my nine-year-old daughter Julia. Sorry, I did it already. So, today's her birthday. We've, we cut short, we cut short her birthday celebration tonight because it's important enough for us to come talk to you about Big Chimneys Park. It's the park I've raised all three of my kids playing at. It's a very important park in our community and for my family. We live right across the street from it. And I was sitting here listening to my neighbors and some of the other folks talk about Big Chimneys, and I realized that the same swings I used to rock Julie on when she was one-year-old, and she fell asleep in my lap, are the same swings that are there now. That was, well, 10 years ago, right? Nine, 10 years ago. So, we really are here to urge you tonight to find a way to make up the funding shortfall and to fully fund Big Chimneys, and light it properly, regrade it properly. My neighbor Diane did a great job describing the problems with the berm. Regrade it, get the dirt to the other part of the park, make it a really nice, walkable city park. Please invest the time and the energy and the money into that park, because it's going to make a nice statement for the rest of the good work that's going on in the city and the city center of Falls Church. And also, would urge you to not stop there. As Nader mentioned, there's needs for traffic calming still on Annandale Road, so we'd hope to see some nice, friendly ways of walking to Harris Teeter, as Nader indicated, as well as slowing traffic on that thoroughfare, and I think you can do that and make a really nice entryway to Big Chimneys Park without compromising on making it nice and safe. I'm going to turn it over to my daughter. She made a little sign tonight. If you want to say anything, Julia or Nick, do you guys want to say anything? I think her sign says, "Promises are meant to be kept," and she drew a picture of the new Big Chimneys there, so, yeah, so we urge you to do that. Thank you.
All right, thank you much, and happy birthday, Julia. Bernadette, you're up. You ready? Mrs. Baruk. Welcome.
Hi, Bernadette Baruk, 243 Gundry Drive, Mayor Tarter, members of council. I just want to, I concur with all the comments that all of my neighbors have made, but I also just wanted to add a couple things. One of the things I was really excited about this park getting renovated is the fact that it was going to be an all-ability park. I learned firsthand the power and the impact that a park that is made for all abilities does for a child, and I urge the council to fully fund this park and move forward on this right away. Secondly, Friday, when I was coming home at about 5:00, 5:30, there was an elderly gentleman in an electric wheelchair crossing from Harris Teeter to the intersect, to the crosswalk that goes to nowhere. Since there is no curb cut on the side of the Big Chimneys Park, he had nowhere to go, and he did not realize he had nowhere to go. He had groceries off the handlebars of his electric cart, and he had to reverse back and then go against traffic up Annandale Road to the curb cut in the driveway that's, the townhomes right there. That's unacceptable, and I think we, as a city, need to know that that's unacceptable, and we need to move forward on getting this work done, and we need to fully fund the park. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Our next speaker, I've just got Mariko. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Thought my last, yes. Thought my last name would be too much.
Okay. All right.
Hi, thank you guys so much. Thank you also to all my neighbors. I came to speak in support of Big Chimney Park, and one of the things that was really confusing to me was that at the last meeting that I attended about Big Chimney Park, we were presented with design plans, and those design plans seemed pretty done. In other words, the, there was very little movement that we could make. They'd been through a long process, and the plans seemed like done, and so one of the major problems at Big Chimney is getting eaten alive, and in fact, it's why we don't go anymore, because there's horrible mosquitoes. So, it just really surprised me to learn about cost overruns, and part of that being the drainage, the huge issue with drainage, and that not, I didn't, from what I've heard, that wasn't properly budgeted for, and it just was shocking to hear, because why present a plan that seems almost done with very little left to do, and then come back and say, "Well, we're not going to do it anymore?" So, that was disappointing and confusing. Another thing is, okay, so my family, we keep it local all the time. We don't leave, and we can't get from our house to like Pizzeria Orso with a stroller, because you cannot, the stairs are very steep coming from Winter Hill down, cutting, cutting down towards, what is it, that street? Shirley, yeah. So, like, if we wanted to, like, stay around, we can't, and also, you know, getting down to that, getting down there with a stroller is hard, and that's why we haven't been there in a couple of years, because when my second kid was born, it's just not accessible. There's like no baby swings, and just physically, I could not get two kids into a kid park. And so, the other thing I have to say is, I agree that we should not phase this project. It's, we should just do it all at once, and make it more accessible for the walkability of our city, but also as part of the promises that the city made. So, thank you guys so much.
Thank you. We appreciate it. All right, our next speaker is Barbara Connolly. Welcome.
I'm Barbara Connolly, and I live at 255 Gundry Drive, and I've been your neighbor in Falls Church City since 1987. And walking through that park, it looks today like it did in 1987. And for the city to save a few dollars, $350,000 is not a lot of money in terms of what's happening in the city today. It's really being the reverse of penny-wise and pound foolish. I would like you to seriously look at ways to raise that money and pay for the full project. A lot of work has been done. You've heard some extremely convincing neighbors talking about, oh, what a difference this park will make in their lives. So, I encourage you to find that money, because to do what we would need to do a year or two or three down the road, you know that money will cost even more. It'll cost much more to do these steps then than it will today, because that's how construction prices only go up. So, I encourage you to find the money. It's a drop in the bucket. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Cassandra Cloud. Welcome. Hi.
I've lived here since about 2005, and I've always lived near Big Chimneys Park. First, I lived on Maple Avenue, which you may remember is right near where the Target is now, and then I moved to Gundry Drive. I've lived here quite a while, first as a renter and now as a homeowner. And that's my two-year-old, who's very much hoping we decide to update this park. This park was dated when I moved here. It was very dated when I moved here, and in the time I've lived here, we've renovated many parks very beautifully, but not Big Chimneys. In fact, I think we've even done Cherry Hill twice in the time that we've been waiting for one renovation of Big Chimneys Park. When we say that we've been waiting two years for this park, that's such an understatement. We've been waiting way, way longer than two years for something that other parts of this city have gotten. We pay a lot of taxes. I know that just my tiny townhouse is like seven grand in taxes, and when you multiply that, just the townhomes, not even the condos, that's over a million dollars in annual revenue. I'm sure you can make up the shortfall with some of that cash. Please, please, please do this right. We all know there will be no Phase Two. We all know that if we do a haphazard job, it'll be a hazard.
(Music.) (Applause.) 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 (Music.) (Applause.)[767.73]
The House has never voted positive on this. I think that time has come that we can actually do this. And so let Falls Church be that little jurisdiction as it punches above its own weight. Be that which says it's time to pass it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I imagine there's consensus on that idea? All right. Other council requests? Ms. Hardy?
Mr. Shields, while we've been talking about walkability, I had a request on when we grant right-of-way permits for utilities or other people working on the streets. I think they do a pretty good job of notifying when sidewalks are going to be closed, but I don't think that notification happens far enough up the sidewalk to let people know to cross. And so I've had several instances where I've either personally experienced this or observed people where they get to the sidewalk closure part and then realize they have to backtrack, or actually play Frogger Across the Street and leap across the other side. So my request is that when we do issue those permits, that not only do they notify that sidewalks are being closed, but to notify pedestrians where they should be able to cross well before they get to that part. And I think this will be especially important when we get to Founder's Row and expect extended lengths of sidewalk closures. Thanks.
All right. Any other council requests? If not, let's move on to the report of the city manager, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council. I wanted to invite Mr. James Mack, who's the project manager for the City Hall project, to give council an update on the City Hall project. This was a request from council that she get an update. And he will be joined, we have in the audience anyway, Mr. Mitch Flipowitz with Hit Construction, Mr. Todd Ray with Studio 27. And together with the city, this is the team that is expanding and updating City Hall. And just as a kind of reminder for the public, we vacated City Hall back in April, and our goals with this project are to improve accessibility to the project, to improve the public meeting spaces, to make it easier for the public to do the public's business in this building and to do so safely. And so we're pleased to give this report. And I'll give one other note. We've just finished a video of a walkthrough of the building, and some of the slides that Mr. Mack will present tonight as part of his update are taken from that video, and that video is being posted so the public can see it as well. Mr. Mack?
Sure. All right. Thanks, Wyatt. And I'd like to thank, it's moving. I'd like to thank council for the opportunity today to provide a project update on the City Hall project. And so like Mr. Shields mentioned, we began construction in January and City Hall fully moved out in April. And kind of the construction approach we've taken is really working from the top to the bottom, from west wing to the east wing. So, and then kind of the new addition on the rear, which is really the secure addition where the courtroom is occurring, and that secure elevator bringing prisoners from the holding up to the courtroom, that new addition and the site, we're kind of running that construction concurrently. Unfortunately, today, I don't have any pictures approved of the exterior. I think when we did this video, this was September 28th, we had kind of, we had rain events prior, so the site wasn't in kind of approvable condition, pretty muddy, a lot of equipment out there. So we only have interior pictures to show, but I'll give a quick update on the exterior work. Obviously, we've done a lot of the foundation, all the foundation work is done. And if you kind of have taken a look out back, we put all the block masonry up for the garage, all that's complete. And then on top of that sits the new steel structure, which is the new addition. That's mainly where the courthouse is going to be. So all that steel work is done. Maybe if we skip to the next slide? Yeah, so that is, essentially, that is where the new council chambers, that steel structure is where council chambers is. And we've also done all the new windows on the exterior of the building. So to do on the exterior, we will, we have window wells, which we're digging out on the west side of the building. We're putting up the copper panels on the outside of the chambers. We're doing the garage, the concrete pad for the garage. We've got the generator. And then as you walk around the exterior of the building, you'll see where the east wing and west wing entrance used to be, there's still some masonry patching work to be done. On the interior, as you see from these pictures, mostly framed and drywall is about 75% complete. We put in the, we've, you know, run a lot of the electric work. The fire protection has been going in. And so a lot of the HVAC, so even though it looks a little rough from the pictures, there's a lot of stuff that's gone on behind the scenes that really can't be captured in the pictures, really up in the ceiling and in the attic, on the roof. A lot of that stuff is going in. We've got, we've got permanent power in the building about a month and a half ago, and that really is going to be an improvement as we're, as we undergrounded the lines that come from Park Avenue. So all that transformers, you'll, if you walk back out there, those transformers are now kind of pad mounted instead of up on that pole, so it'll really kind of improve the view shed in that area. So if we go to the next slide, again, the new chambers is starting to take shape. We've, we don't have the drywall all the way through there because that's being built as part of the new addition. And then if we go to some of these other places, obviously, we have the drywall up. You can see the new windows there. And we've actually started to do a lot of painting. We are doing the, the west wing stairs are always all completed. We've demoed out the east wing stairs, and we're going to be putting those in soon. And we're also starting to order, or we will be putting in order for FFNE furniture order in, and I think next week is our goal. So still a lot of things to do. We still have the east wing stairs to put in. We have elevators to put in. And the next kind of big, large milestone really is to start conditioning the space, so getting the HVAC online so that we can start doing all the finishes. So a lot of the mill work that needs to come in, and the more detailed work that has to come in as we condition the space. So I think we're looking at getting that done really within the next week or two weeks. And then IT cabling coming after that. Right now, we have about 80% of our ceilings closed in, so we're really getting, you know, as we get, you know, we're 75% complete with our drywall, so we're closing in that, we're closing in the ceiling. So we're really getting to a point where we can get, get the finish work in. We're looking at a mid to late February move-in for staff. And so that's really it. You know, we'll have an update video available for the public, and I think was distributed to council earlier. And I have with me Mitch Flipowitz from Hit and Todd Ray from Studio 27, the architect team. Well, Mitch is with the contractor and Todd is with the architect, is the lead architect. So we're here to answer any of your questions. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much for the update. Do we have some questions? Ms. Hardy?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mack. Looks like good progress. So based on the progress to date, what percent kind of completion are we?
I think it's about 70% complete. That's a little hard to say that's a very exact scientific number, but it's, it's the best estimate I can give.
Got it. And given that, I think the original move-in date was kind of end of the year, and now it looks like mid to late February, like you said, and I think later on a consent agenda, it looks like we're approving extra money for prolonging kind of our leases. Could you give more details on why the delay?
Yeah, it's, it's been a very complex project. Obviously, this is a renovation of a very old building. It's the 1950s. Original building is 1950s, and then later on 1980s building. So there, you know, there are things just come up during construction and a renovation of that nature. And so we are working through those, but that, that's really the nature of the delays there.
And with the extra money that we need for more rent, what, I assume it's coming out of a contingency budget? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
And then how much of contingency do we have left in the contingency budget after we extend the leases?
I think that's, that's an ongoing thing that really needs to be taken a look at in terms of the full context. We do have a lot of other changes that we're also processing. So at this point, I'd really have to go back and take a look at that.
And one thing I'll just note for the council, we have a regular meeting with the project management team and with finance just to review the project budget. If there are any big concerns, we'll let the council know. Right now, we're managing, we think, the costs in terms of its project budget well. But if, you know, as, as we're moving along, if there are any concerns, we'll certainly raise the flag.
Comments? Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one. It's more of a question curiosity. As, as we go through this project, and I certainly understand that renovation project is not the easiest thing to do in the world. It's everywhere you turn, there are going to be things that no one had seen before, no one had expected. To have it where it is right now, I think is an admirable status that is attributed to the strength and skills of the team that we have before us, beginning with the architect and the contractor and the city staff. So the one question I do have is, was, is there anything along the way here that, for lack of a better word, sacrificed? Or won't be done that we were expecting to see at the end, but will not be installed at this point because of whatever?
I think at this point, everything that was within the guaranteed maximum price is expected to be installed.
Okay. That's a good answer. Thank you.
All right. Well, if there's nothing else, thank you for your, all of your good work, and let's get this thing done, man. Let's wrap it up. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is, we're moving to business on the agenda. Madam Clerk, do you want to call the first item?
Yes, sir. We have TO 18-10, Ordinance to amend Ordinance 1983 and Ordinance 1984 regarding the budget of expenditures and revenues appropriating funds for fiscal year 2019 for the general fund, Cable Access Fund, and the Capital Improvements Programs Fund.
All right. Do we have something to disclose? Vice Mayor Connolly, do you want to?
After consulting with the city attorney, I want to make the following statement before city council's consideration of a budget amendment, Agenda Item 10A1, second reading of TO 18-10.
I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board and therefore am a member of a group of three or more persons that may be affected by the FY 2019 budget. I can participate in this matter fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
All right. My turn. After consulting with the city attorney, I want to make the following statement before city's council's consideration of a budget amendment, Agenda Item 10A1, second reading for TO 18-10. My wife is an employee of the Falls Church City School Board and therefore am a member of a group of three or more persons that may be affected by the FY 2019 budget. However, I can participate in this matter fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. All right. Ms. Bowa, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Tarter and members of the council. In front of you, we have the second hearing of the first budget amendment for fiscal year 19 for adoption of the ordinance. This would increase the general fund appropriation by 691,528 for, to a total of bringing the total budget, amended budget to $93,238,765. There are some amendments to Cable Access Fund, Use of Fund Balance, Stormwater Fund, and Special Transportation and CIP. There are no changes since the first hearing. And with that, I'll conclude my report and open to any questions you may have.
All right. Are there any questions? Comments? Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Ms. Bowett, in light of recent events related to Big Chimney Park and a request for additional funding, because that is a relatively new issue that's come up, is that something that we should consider tabling this even though it's second reading until that's figured out?
I think the council has, and I let the city attorney opine, but the council has the option to send us back to first hearing and re-advertise with an amendment for the Big Chimney, because we will have to come back with an ordinance for two hearings to appropriate any dollars.
Yeah, I don't want to complicate anything, but I'm just thinking about expediency and if we have alternatives or options that we're considering at least in advance of next week, and this is something that we're going to resolve, that possibly we should.
If we were to amend this to increase funding for Big Chimneys, you need to start over for a new first reading. And that's actually for the city attorney to say more than me, but I went ahead and said it. So it wouldn't actually save much time if we were to hold off on this in order to address that issue.
Yeah, so you, you could either, you can deal with these items now and do the Big Chimneys separately, or if you want to, just wait and have a new first reading for everything you can. But it, you can do, as you do them separately, these get done faster.
If it's not going to make things easier or faster and remove a layer of bureaucracy, then I say we'll just proceed as planned. So thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Hardy?
On that same line of thinking, because I, I think both the community and the Park and Rec Board made a strong case for kind of proceeding with Big Chimneys. So I'd like, certainly like to decide on that tonight if possible. It sounds like we might have to discuss at work session next week and then bring two votes, a first reading and second reading for Big Chimneys. So that puts us into mid-November. Does that delay the project or cause any complications with the project plan as it stands?
If, if we could get a, I think the discussion at the work session, if there appears to be a strong consensus on a way forward at work session, then the project manager would take a site plan for the full project through its approval process. If there was not a strong consensus, then, and that would be done at some risk, the council could change its mind through the budget amendment process. But we, I think we would take it as, this is a signal, let's proceed at least to try to move the project forward. If there was not a strong consensus, then that would require additional time.
All right. Other questions or comments? Any member of the public wish to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to public comment. So this is a second reading. Do we have a motion? Mr. Z?
Mayor, move to adopt TO 18-10.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion carries seven to zero.
All right.
So, Mr. Mayor, before we leave this item, since we're on sort of capital expenditures, when are we going to address the Big Chimneys Park? And are we going to instruct the city manager to bring back in action?
Well, I was just going to ask the city manager that, but I think if there's no further time for that, I think this would be appropriate time to, to give you some guidance, Mr. Shields, unless you think there's another moment that's more opportune?
I think this would be a good time.
Okay. All right. Do we want to discuss this? Do we have a consensus to go ahead and fully fund the park?
We're talking about fully funding 1,000, $1,350,000, so adding an additional $350,000.
So to be clear, you found 243K that could be utilized if we approve, and then you would be short.
So the income from the second installment of the Matt's Taylor property, which at the time that it was sold, it was the Mailboxes property, that's $235,000. So if that were, if the decision were to allocate that to Big Chimneys, then there'd be a $115,000 gap. And I think that's probably the piece that requires a little bit more discussion because there are some options on that if, and so that's what we would come back at work session.
And you would have those options fully fleshed out by this time next week?
We would. I'm a little, we have some ideas right now, but I'm, we've kind of came up with them just in the last week, and we want to vet them a little bit more before we sort of charge out of the barn with those.
Well, I for one am happy that you're thinking about it. And also, I want to say that even though I was not part of the council that approved the Harris Hill project, I, so therefore I have no memory of promises made to stand up the park and solve full design glory with 150 lights at night. But nonetheless, I think that, that park does need to be, need to be one of the example of what we can do in the city. So I'm fully, I'm in favor of fully funding the park. Thank you.
All right. Do we have a consensus then? Is there anyone opposed to having the, directing the city manager to find funds to complete the park at one fell swoop in the total amount of 1.3 million, 500, or 50,000? All right. So I think you've got your marching orders, Mr. Shields. Why don't you come back with us with different ways to, to accomplish that goal? Certainly, the money from the sale of the Mailbox property, it seems like it's, it's going to take us a pretty good way there, but there still is a little farther to go. So we look forward to hearing the options to us, how we might accomplish that.
Okay. Thank you, council.
Can I throw in a small request? Could I throw in a small request? Because I know that some citizens commented about traffic calming, and I know that we're waiting for the FY 20 grant money to come in. I want to see whether we could explore the ADA issues, I think this was referred to as the crosswalk that goes nowhere. So both pedestrians, strollers, wheelchairs, I want to make sure that there is access from that point. So even after the park is renovated, while we're waiting for the traffic calming money, we address that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all for coming out this evening. Appreciate your comments, your input. Let's move on to the next item. Madam Clerk? Can you call the next set of business?
Yes, sir. We have TR 18-38. It's a resolution adopting City of Falls Church purchasing resolution.
And Council Mr. Wise is here to give the staff report. This was discussed at work session, so we'll just do a quick overview and see if there are any questions.
Good evening. It's good to see you all again. As Mr. Shields just mentioned, we did discuss this last week at the work session. You all asked some very good questions. Mr. Snyder wanted to know what contractors might be available to us by adoption of the purchase of resolution that are not now. I can give you a couple of those in just a minute. But I think that this resolution would be very, very useful and beneficial to the City of Falls Church. It would make our procurement process much more expedient and much more controllable by us. We would have more flexibility and latitude in what we could do. So a couple of the contracts, contractors who would be available to us for construction, who are not at the moment, would be such as Precision Doors and Precision Sidewalks, two different companies, same name, the kind of sidewalk work, striping, that sort of thing. We wouldn't have to go out on a formal solicitation any longer for that. Roof repair, there's a couple of different companies that do roof repair, Nastos Construction and Garland. Trane does HVAC design installation, and there's, there's a host of others. I could stand here and read for a while longer, but those are the kind of contractors who would be available to us without having to go out through that whole formal process, which we have to do now. So we see this as a really positive move forward for the city. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wise, for your wise counsel.
Yeah. Jim, just, just to be clear, I think we asked this at work session. This doesn't handcuff us and require us to use this, correct? This is just an option?
It's just, just as Ms. Connolly said, it's just another, another tool in the box.
Great.
We have it at our option. It doesn't mean we have to use it. We may never use it, but I'm fairly confident we will.
Okay. Thanks, Jim.
Mr. Snyder?
And just to clarify things, all of these contracts would have been originally competed.
Yes. Yes. A cooperative contract cannot be used if it was not competed originally. Thank you.
All right. There was some discussion last time about looking at the Big Chimneys Park and seeing if there would be cost savings. Is it possible to do any of that over this past week, or is that not yet done?
I don't recall that as, as a do-out from the meeting. I know that I mentioned that Kim Callahan was very pleased to see me here last week in support of this resolution because she sees work at Big Chimneys and at the Downtown Plaza and a couple of other areas that she would be able to do much more cost-effective things by the use of this resolution. I think that may be what you're recalling.
Okay. All right. Well, listen, it's not like there's any more comments from council. Let me see if the public has any, any comments. Any member of the public wish to address this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. I think we're probably ready for a motion, so thank you very much for your work on this and the many other procurements you're working on right now. Does anyone have a motion with regards to this matter?
Mr. Mayor, move to up TR 18-38.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Hardy on the second. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's move on to the next item.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, we have TR 18-44, Resolution to Approve FY 2019 Funding Recommendations for the Arts and Cultural Grants and Virginia Commission for the Arts Local Challenge Grants Submission.
And Council Ms. Corey Janicelli will give the staff report for this. We have done work led by Ms. Janicelli on some changes to the allocations in response to some of the discussion that came from the work session, and so we can provide you that update.
Thank you. So in brief summary, all the project and operational grant proposals are recommended, are recommended for a grant award this year. In terms of our project grant, this year, we had five project proposals submitted with a combined total of $22,000 in requested funding, of which the Grant Review Committee recommended full funding of all project grants this year. In terms of our operational grant submissions, this year, we had five operational proposals submitted with a combined total of $47,500, and the Grant Review Committee recommended grant awards for all five operational grant proposals with a combined total of $25,000 based on the original guidelines. And we did mention last week that due to significant increase in operational funding requests, that staff recommends council allow 2,500 of the allocated project grant funding to be used towards operational grant funding this year. Based on our conversation last week at the work session, staff proposes to reallocate that full $2,500 to Creative Cauldron to support their operational need. And you can see the full funding recommendations found in Attachment A and B. And I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
All right. Thank you very much. I know a lot of work's gone into getting us where we are today, so we greatly appreciate it. Is everyone basically all right kind of where we ended up with?
Yeah. You know, I think that the organizations really appreciate the support that they get from the city. Certainly, these organizations, every dollar counts, so they're happy for the funds that they receive. I know Creative Cauldron has expressed concern about their, their funding situation for FY 20. And so that's something that I've spoken a lot to Creative Cauldron with, and certainly something that we would like to share to the city council, that they have arts Fairfax funding that won't be coming to them next year.
All right. Questions? Comments? Vice Mayor Connolly?
I want to compliment you, Ms. Janicelli, on your handling of the dispersal of all of these grants. As you said, everyone really appreciates what they receive, and I know they're really grateful. And I think that there's been some back and forth about what's the best way to do it, and I, I want to commend you especially on maintaining the integrity of the Grant Review Committee, because that's a citizen committee, and we want to make sure that the work that they do is fully transparent in the way that grants are dispersed. So thank you for that. One of the conversations that came up during the work session and then continued through the week with the grantees was, are there reasons to change this process next year or to change some of the criteria for the operations grants in particular so that they are more proportional to the operating budgets of the organizations? And I think that's something that I would like to have looked at next year before we get to the point of issuing those grants.
Yeah, I'm happy to look into that. I know there's a lot of different ways that our program can be set up, and I know Creative Cauldron is, you know, six times bigger than some of our other organizations. So there is definitely a size difference when it comes to our organizations and what their needs are. So I'm happy to look at what alternatives and figure out what best going to work forward for next year.
And then what's the process? If we were to revise the requirements for the operations grants, would that have to come through council? Or could that just be changed internally?
I think the program is set forth in resolution that was approved by city council.
So we'd have to do another resolution?
That's correct.
And when would that be? Next spring? When do these get issued?
Yeah. So I would certainly want to review it this winter and come back early spring, so that we can give the organizations enough time, if the plan is changing, that they know what the new process is and that they can plan accordingly.
Okay. So we'll look forward to talking about this further in late winter, early spring.
Yes.
Thank you again for your work. And I think it's really important, too, just that the city council and the city staff really support the arts in Falls Church. I know I believe that they really add a lot to the fabric of the community and the culture of the community, so I'm glad that we're able to do this.
Thank you.
All right. Can you just remind me how much Cauldron is out when they don't get the arts Fairfax grant?
So this year, I believe they received over $22,000 from arts Fairfax.
And they will not be getting that money in the next cycle?
No. Next year, they won't be, they won't be able to apply for that grant program.
Okay. Thanks. All right. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Are there any other questions or comments, or should we go ahead and get a motion?
Move to adopt TR 18-44.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Hardy on the second. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your fine work. We appreciate it. Next item.
We have TR 18-40, Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Extend a Lease Agreement with Mueller Development Company, LLC, for a period not to exceed 90 days at 400 North Washington Street for municipal use for a cost not to exceed $39,420.
Mr. Shields?
Mayor Tarter, might I suggest that for the staff report, we discuss the next item, item four, TR 18-41, at the same time?
All right.
Do you want to read that one?
Sure. TR 18-41, Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Extend a Lease Agreement with Jefferson 450 LLC for a period not to exceed 90 days for municipal use at 450 West Broad Street for a cost not to exceed $4,077.
All right. Mr. Shields?
So counsel, both of these requests relate to the report that you just received with the update on the City Hall project. We are currently anticipating substantial completion on the City Hall project in mid- February. And so what is required, we believe, based on that schedule, is a two-month extension on both of these leases. We are actually asking for three months, authority for three months extension, simply to give us a little bit of planning flexibility and not have to come back to council for that additional third month. What the per-month cost is, and what they, when we work with the landlord, what we'll actually be asking for is a one, you know, increases in our lease term in one-month increment. And so for the, at 400 Washington Street, that's $13,140 or thereabouts per month. And for 450 West Broad, it's about $1,300 per month. We are going to make every effort to keep that time as short as possible. We all want to get back into the new City Hall, and we want to do so in the most affordable way possible. But that's the request, and we'd be happy to answer any questions for it.
All right. Any questions? Mr. Littenhouse and Mr. Snyder?
So essentially, you're asking for up to 90 days, but may not take that?
We would hope we will use no more than 60.
Okay. What's, from a lease perspective, what's our timeframe for a notice to vacate?
60 days in advance. So for the month of January, we need to give notice by November 1.
Okay.
That's the notice to extend. We have the right to extend for up to 90 days.
Correct.
So by November 1, we have to notify the landlord that we are extending the lease.
Okay.
And so we would change the expiration date, and then potentially, we could then have 60 days before that to take the next extension, because our right is to get up to 90 days in 30-day increments.
Okay.
One month at a time.
We're effectively going month to month, though, after what was expected to be year end 2018, correct? And then there's not a notice to vacate time period for the month to month?
No. So if we, we would extend for maybe 30 days, and then we'd have to meet the 60 days before the new expiration date again to get the next.
Yeah. I just want to make sure we're not going to run afoul of any penalties or requirement to step into an additional month at the end.
No, because the lease would then expire.
Okay.
And we wouldn't have to notice to vacate.
Okay.
Mr. Snyder?
Does this mean that the original completion date is being missed?
Yeah. The original substantial completion date was December 31st.
So I'm wondering if we could have an appropriate briefing on the contractual issues, and I am interested in that. I don't, I think, to the extent litigation may be involved, then I would be, you know, it seems appropriate for a closed session. I'll leave it there.
Other questions, comments? I, I'm sympathetic in some regards. In other regards, I, my inclination maybe is to give you two months and try to hold your feet to the fire, because I would like to see things move as quickly as they can. As we've seen tonight, we've got unexpected costs at Big Chimneys Parks. This is an unexpected cost, even though it's not a huge cost, when you start adding it up over a period of months. And I think more and more construction projects are going to see cost increases for labor, materials, probably interest costs with inflation are probably going to go up as well. So I think we've just got to be prepared for the possibility of additional increases in our construction projects and other things that we're doing. So I think we need to be very conservative and keep that in mind as we go forward. So anyway, part of me wants to just go for two months and have you come back and ask for another month, but I don't know if other people feel similarly or just like to go ahead and bang it out for three. But I do have, again, some desire to hold your feet to the fire and really put the pressure on the contractor to finish up the job as quick as possible. But that's my only concern or comment. So you're hearing an outpouring of?
So I heard the city manager say he was going to use his best effort at this, and what I'm hearing is he'll do two months if that's, if no more time is needed. He's not going to extend for three months if only two months is needed. And having had the opportunity to visit the temporary City Hall offices, I'm sure no one's more anxious to move and to move this project along than the people who are working in those City Hall offices at this point. So I think the impetus is there, but could we have regular reports on how we're doing time-wise? And then, as appropriate, with the city attorney, anything that might involve, you know, litigation or contractual issues?
I'm fine with that. I do just want to keep the heat on, because everything we do has cost overruns or additional costs. It's going to be real hard to make everything work at the end of the day. So this is one that I really like, want to keep the pressure on. So anyway, Mr. Z?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. The, having had some experience and skill in working on construction claims and litigation, I think that holding the proverbial feet to the fire means, in terms of litigation, unwarranted acceleration in progress, and that exposes us to liability. So I think that's a, it's a path we don't want to go down. And if we do, we do so with our eyes open. So at this point, I'd like to move to adopt TR 18-40, and I move to adopt TR 18-41. Thank you.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right. Before we get to the vote, is there any member of the public who wishes to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Madam Clerk?
And this is for the two items. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, counsel.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on to the next item.
We are on to consent items.
So anyone wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? All right. Do we have a motion then regarding the consent agenda?
May I move the consent agenda?
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any member of the public wish to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Other business?
So counsel, we have two items listed under other business, and we would also like to ask the counsel if you would consider adding a third item to other business, which would relate to the holiday schedule for the Christmas and New Year's Day holidays. And I think the staff report, has that staff report been distributed? And is it on the back?
I don't think so. I think you have it.
Okay. Great. And here's some for the public as well. So just what the request is, is to add an item three under other business, which would be TR 18-47, Resolution Granting a half-day holiday on December 24, 2018, and a full-day holiday on December 31, 2018, as additional holidays for city employees. And when we get to item three, I'll provide a little bit more of a staff report.
May I move to amend the tonight's agenda to add TR 18-47 as C3?
I think the idea was that that would be treated not as a consent agenda item, but as other business. Is that right?
That's correct. It would be added as item three under other business. So there would be a separate vote by the city council.
Okay. All right. Why don't you get on with the presentation?
Okay. So item one on other business is a request for counsel to authorize the expenditure of $160,000 through an agreement with Black Box Network Services for phone system upgrade and replacement, an amount up to $160,000, and then to be able to renew that contract annually for seven years for the maintenance agreement for the phone system.
Mr. Shields?
Yes.
There is a motion on the table to amend the agenda.
So we need to do that first.
Second.
And you can just do that by voice vote.
Why don't we go ahead and do it by roll call vote?
Okay. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder? Mr. Z?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Excuse me.
All right. I know we're having a little conversations here on things, so why don't you go ahead and go to item two, and then we can try to catch up in between?
Okay. So item one is the, was the contract for Black Box. I can list item two as well. Do you want me to go ahead and?
Can I ask a question on item one?
Is there anything you want to say about it?
Well, we do have Mr. Jamal Matthews here, who is, who can answer any questions about this. What this is, we have put out to bid and through a competitive process, how to procure the core phone system for City Hall. And what it will allow us to do is have a, you know, full functionality for a phone system, for voicemail, for basically all of our telecommunication, telecommunications needs at City Hall. And this is, Black Box is who the city has used in the past. And maybe just invite Mr. Matthews forward if there are any questions about this contract and the process we use to procure it.
I just want to explain a little more, because I think the motion doesn't make it entirely clear, but this contract is for, and Jamal, you correct if I say it wrong, but it's $160,000 in the first year, which is for the renewal and replacement of the system. And then the renewal of the contract for the additional seven years is a much smaller amount for operation and maintenance, and that'll be subject to appropriation, but that's expected to run about $15,000 a year.
Less than that even.
Less than that. So if that's not clear, the renewal or the additional seven years are not $160,000 per year.
Yeah. Thank you for that clarification.
All right. Ms. Hardy, do you have a question?
Yes. So I don't know anything about phone systems, but I assume that if we're getting a new system, the annual maintenance operating is going to be cheaper. So is that $15,000 a year cheaper than what we're paying currently?
Actually, yes, it is. And it's not even going to be $15,000. It's going to be less than $10,000. So there was an adjustment made to that.
Okay.
That's the annual maintenance. Typical maintenance on most contracts is around 20% to 25%. So this is actually coming in much lower than, you know, that was, would be the norm.
Thank you.
All right. Other, Mr. Littenhouse?
Yeah. Was this not something that we built into the renovation itself, the city home?
No. This is, this is actually finally committing to the CIP project that we had done nearly five years ago. We've just finally gotten around to doing the RFP process and getting this committed.
And I would like to clarify that it is not the phone system for City Hall, it's the phone system for the entire city or governmental.
Ah, got it.
It's the city in its entirety.
Upper yard or our house.
Yes. All locations. This encompasses all locations, and in fact, it is, it is even a system that is, was intended to include the schools, however, they chose to go to a different direction.
That clarifies. Thank you.
All right. Other questions, comments? Mr. Snyder?
Has this expenditure been budgeted?
Yes. Yes. This is in the adopted capital improvements program.
And funded?
Yes.
That's correct. And the maintenance, that we already have that in our existing budget, operating budget for the maintenance moving forward.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Any member of the public wish to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. What action is required, if any, on this? Mr. Shields?
Just the motion that is listed in the staff report.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion?
It's a long one. Move to authorize the city manager on behalf of the city to sign agreement with New Vision Technologies, LLC, DBA Black Box Network Services, in an amount up to $160,000, and to renew the contract annually for seven additional one-year terms, subject to annual appropriation of funds by city council and the budget.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Abstain.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right. Next item?
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. The next item is authorization for the expenditure of up to $400,000 for fiscal year 2019 for job order contracting services per an existing contract with Centennial Contractors Enterprises Incorporated. These are also budgeted items for maintenance of city facilities. What the request is tonight is basically a job order contract with Centennial. Centennial is the contractor that's been hired for the library project, and we would be expanding that project to be able to do other job orders that have been approved in the budget. And two examples of projects that are approved in the budget. One is for the community center to replace the HVAC system for this building, which is end of life. That project is anticipated to be approximately $244,000. It would entail the replacement of five HVAC units, replacement of the flat roof portion of the City Hall, and a low-slope roof. You'll recall that we replaced all the shingles on the pitched roof of City Hall, but we didn't touch this part of the project because of the HVAC units that are on it. The other item that would be, that's in the budget, that would be covered under this contract in the current fiscal year, is improvements to the Howard Herman Stream Valley Park entrance. This is a project that's in the CIP, and it would allow a more welcoming entrance to Howard Herman Park, which would include an arched steel entrance sign, a brick paver area, landscaping, benches, bicycle rack, and other amenities. The estimated cost for that is $129,000. So those are two examples of job order contracts that we would envision using Centennial to do, and they're approved in the budget, but this would give us the ability to proceed with those projects.
All right. Any questions, comments? Ms. Hardy, then Ms. Snyder.
Thank you. So no concerns about two items. I support both of them. I just wanted to note, as the liaison to the Parks and Recs Board, there was discussion about the Howard Herman Stream Valley Park entrance, and I think there was actually a vote on what the entrance should look like, and I think the majority of the vote was kind of this arched steel. I don't get a vote in that discussion, but I personally am a fan of actually making it consistent with the way other parks look. I don't know if that's still up for discussion, but I just wanted to make sure that council was aware that there was kind of a pretty ornate, and I think very nice, design for this arched steel entrance, but it will look different than the rest of other park entrances. And I think the thinking behind the board is that they wanted this park to feel a little different, that it was more of a trail as opposed to a city park. So I just wanted to call that out as the design takes shape.
So we're going to have arch terrains instead of something else? Birds with the wings spread?
With foliage and maybe some birds and kind of like a steel kind of design, kind of a gateway over it, as opposed to kind of the red and white signs that we normally have at the entrance of city parks.
I think that's pretty cool. Thank you.
It'll complement the art in the park that's there, if you've seen it down the trail.
Mr. Snyder?
So we've heard a presentation about safety needs in Big Chimneys Park, and yet we don't have that fully resolved, and now we're talking about an ornamental entrance to another park. There's some dissonance there, and I'm going to abstain from this decision, because I want to see what the options are for dealing with Big Chimneys Park. If I had to prioritize the two, I would put Big Chimneys up there first. I don't want to have to prioritize the two, but I don't know that right now. So I'm not going to vote for spending $129,000, which would actually pretty much close the gap on Big Chimneys Park by paying for a gateway that's, yes, attractive, yes, desirable, but is ornamental for another park. Thanks.
All right. I think we have a speaker about this entrance way.
Well, I was actually just inviting Mr. Schillt forward in case there were any questions. But the, so that is, I guess, one question in terms of how those two interact with each other.
Yeah, so as Mr. Shields noted, that they were two separate CIP items, and the Howard E. Herman Stream Valley Park project has been underway for a long time. Part of it done through Public Works in the daylighting of the stream, and then some of it through the Recreation and Parks portion of the CIP. And this is kind of the finishing touches to that project. There's a little bit of work on the actual path, where there's some real erosion issues that are also included in some of these monies that we're looking for. But this is kind of tying in that, finishing that project that was also, you know, a project that was vetted through the community and so on and so forth. So, you know, two separate park projects. And I just handed out something that gives you a little visual of what the signage might look like over there at Howard E. Herman Stream Valley Park. And one of the big issues over there was, we were looking at a potentially different way of putting up the frontage signage over there, and we really didn't have the space. The reality is that we still have to be able to drive a vehicle in there, so we had to create something that you could actually drive under. And everything else we tried to put in seemed to get either in the way of the streetscape or different things. So there was some discussion, as councilperson Hardy mentioned, you know, in a lot of the advisory board meetings and community portions, but that is kind of the design that was ultimately decided amongst the different groups.
So I do want to make a comment, because I use this trail a lot, as do the rest of my family. And I do look at this as a safety issue. I mean, the ingress egress off on that trail, being someone that has wrecked a bike on it because of the erosion, make it difficult, and also with foot traffic. So I think a more pronounced entrance and actually having the brick pavers, as well as really just an understanding as to when you're entering a common space, a green area, and when you're exiting, and helping people understand that's going to make it a heck of a lot safer, because it certainly is, it seems incomplete, and it is treacherous right there coming off of that trail, certainly on bicycles, strollers, and any other kind of vehicle that you might traverse that trail with. So, one, I support it, because I do think that it is a safety issue, but I am glad that it's going to look good, too, from a signage perspective.
I do think from the very beginning, when the process started, the idea was, is that we have these parks that are right, really faced on Broad Street, that we would announce them a little bit. And I think the work that was done at West End Park certainly, you know, got some attention, and people enjoyed that. And then when we got to Howard E. Herman, it was certainly brought up in that way, too. It also has been mentioned by the advisory board and many folks that that park has gotten a lot of use since it was put in. But then there's a lot of folks that really don't know where it is, and I think this will announce that to the community.
So one of the best votes I ever made was to purchase that park. So I'm very pleased with the park. I'm pleased that we've developed it. But I'm looking at an ornamental sign that costs some money. It's not just erosion control, an ornamental sign that costs some money. And we just had citizens come forward and make a very convincing case that the park next to where they live is unsafe, and frankly, they may have a pretty good case there. So I'm just saying that if we don't come up with another option for dealing and effectively finishing Big Chimneys Park to make it a safe, well-lit park, I don't see spending money on an ornamental entrance to another park, if that's the trade-off we have to make. Thank you.
So Mr. Shields, let me just ask, I'll get you, Mr. Duncan, and just say, are you confident we can find the money for the gap for Big Chimneys Park?
Well, I'm confident that we'll have good options for you, but all options do have trade-offs. I mean, it is, and so you know how that will work. But the, you know, the funding options that will present will either be fund balance, or we have interest proceeds from debt that's been issued for existing capital projects that has not been budgeted. Those are two options. And Ms. Bawa, I think is still working the issue, may identify some other ones, but those are two that I anticipate we'll be bringing to you.
Mr. Duncan?
I think Mr. Snyder is correct to tie these two things together that we've talked about tonight. The way I would look at it is, you know, it's an investment in both cases, and I would expect that we would have a full and complete funding option for the other park as well. It's a yield on the investment of effort that we've made to do the development that we've done here for these past many years. And, you know, a natural extension of that is to create spaces like this, and at Big Chimneys Park for people who are out on the street walking to the fine mixed-use developments can enjoy. So I would certainly vote for this tonight, fully expecting that next time we vote, I'd be able to support a option for Big Chimneys that met the satisfaction of at least the majority that I think I've heard speak tonight.
Other comments? Z?
Well, I just, having looked at this for the first time tonight, it's a nice, friendly, little naturalistic sign, and I think the design is well worthy of announcing that we actually have a park there. And the fact that we're actually doing some maintenance and erosion upkeep means that we're not doing what we usually do, which is to announce the park and then not finish it off. Or wait 10 years and then have to do a whole lot more. So I am in favor of doing this. I kind of expected more of a Jurassic Park feel to this, but this looks very nice and friendly. Maybe just make some of these trees look like dinosaurs and be perfect. So I'm of mind that we will find the money for Big Chimneys Park. We'll get that done as well. But we do need to finish off Howard E. Herman Park. Thank you.
About how much does this sign cost, ballpark? Five grand, 10 grand?
Yeah, I don't have those numbers right in front of me right now. I apologize. I can certainly get them.
Okay. I mean, to me, if you were asking the priority of the two items, I probably would lie with Big Chimneys, but I think this is also worthy. And so if I were to vote for this tonight, I guess my expectation would be that we'd come up with a solution that can work for Big Chimneys next week, or whatever it might be. So that would be my expectation. I mean, I got to just reiterate what I said earlier, which is, this is all going to put pressure on operating budgets and other things as we go forward in the next budget cycle and the one after that. We're going to have increasing pressures on operating budgets, because construction and interest and other things are going to keep going up in costs. Things are not going to come under budget. Nothing is going to come under budget the next couple of years. It ain't going to happen. So, you know, I foresee more of these circumstances arising, where we need some extra money to put here and there. And so I would just suggest we keep that in mind when we go forward and try to keep our belts as tight as we can. Any other?
Mr. Shields, confirm, both of these items are budgeted already? Not a new request, right?
Yeah, these are budgeted for in the capital improvements program.
And did Howard Herman Stream Valley Park come in or add below the project budget?
Mr. Schillt, do you know the answer to that question?
I'm confident to say we will have enough money and probably have a small amount left over once Howard E. Herman Stream Valley Park is completed. And it is my full intention to take whatever that small amount is and help, you know, over at Big Chimneys as we get further into that project.
So I guess if we can be a little more prescriptive, and when we talk about options for Big Chimneys, if there's cost savings in item number two here, let's see how much of that we can divert to Big Chimneys. So let's, you know, accomplish things like the erosion control, the landscaping, the brick paving, but if there's places where we can save money, let's make sure we take that and put it towards Big Chimneys, given that there's consensus that's a pretty high priority for us.
And will we know that in time for the decision? I mean, that could be a direction going forward, but I don't think we'll know that next week.
Yes, so the $129,000 that's included in that portion of the 400 is an absolute. There's additional money left in the CIP. We have not finished off a couple of the pieces that we intend, even through this construction. There's some additional other entrance and egress signage, Lee Street, the small entrance over there, we have a little bit of signage to do there. We also have some commitment to doing some dog waste station, maybe stations, in that park. It gets a lot of use by dog walkers and things like that. So there's a few more pieces that have to come in. There is some additional monies in the CIP, but it's not in this portion of, this is more of the Public Works side of the, this project is the Public Works construction side of the finishing up that front streetscape and the archway.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments? Any member of the public wish to speak to this matter, seeing none of the matters closed to the public? Do we have a motion?
So this is item 10C2, move to authorize the expenditure of up to $400,000 for fiscal year 2019 for job order contracting services per an existing contract with Centennial Contractor Enterprises Incorporated.
It's, just to be clear, it's 10E2, I believe.
Sorry. Those reading glasses that I don't have. Thank you.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Abstain.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero with one abstention. Thank you, counsel.
All right. Thank you.
And next, TR 18-47, resolution granting a half-day holiday on December 24th, 2018, and a full-day holiday on December 31st, 2018, as additional holidays for city employees.
I move to call the first holiday Tarter Day and the second holiday Z-Day.
All right. What say you, Mr. Shields?
Well, this is a request that comes to us from the Employee Advisory Commission, and our HR director, Ms. Mester, will very briefly give a report on this.
Yes, as Mr. Schill indicated, our employee advisory group, our EAC, did request us to look at the holidays. So I did some research at what the state, in collaboration with our chair, Mr. Laporta, has provided, as well as our other local governments. And because the Christmas Eve and the New Year's Eve falls on a Monday, most localities in the state are doing the four-day holiday, so that's our recommendation before council for this year. Under our administrative regulations, if we modify any holidays beyond the standard ones that have already been adopted, it requires council's review and action as a resolution. And you will know that there is a fiscal impact that we've identified for coverage for essential personnel during this time, and that's in the amount of $6,000 for the day and a half additional holiday. With that, be glad to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions, comments? Mr. Z?
Well, I'm encumbered to say something about this, because I said something about this last time around. So as I'm about to say something, I'm just getting like mean looks, questioning looks. I think someone was prepared to use the word that begins with an S, and it's not my last name for real. So I'm happy to move to adopt TR 18-47.
Second, second, second.
His heart grew three times.
The Grinch seconds the motion.
True to his word. Scrooge celebrated his Christmas every day of the year.
Scrooge makes the motion, and the Grinch seconds the motion.
I was thinking about something else, beginning with S. Those are Mondays, so you'd have to have council meetings those nights.
That's right, yeah. Grumpy, grouchy, and dopey.
In your apartment, and you're providing drinks.
Vice Mayor Conley?
So I may have to read my disclaimer again, but I'd like to suggest that you share this with the school board as well, as a group of three or more employees.
All right. So I'm sure there's a member of the public who'd like to tell us how great it is, and no. All right, the matter's closed to the public. Madam Clerk, are we kind of, do we have a motion?
And a second?
Madam Clerk?
Second. Good.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, counsel.
All right. Let the party begin. All right, so is there any business not on the agenda? Is there any reports from state, regional committee, or council liaison reports? And remember, we do intend to have a closed session. Do we not, Mr. Shields, a brief closed session after this meeting?
We do have a motion that is prepared. If the council would like to go in closed session, we could just do an update on the campus project.
All right, let's do a brief one. All right. Any liaison reports, et cetera, that were not given earlier? Okay. Any council member comments?
May I ask a question?
Okay.
Have we heard anything yet about the date for our joint meeting with the school board, or has that been floated out to them?
Be an abbreviated version, yes. We did have, we struggled with getting a date. With Budget and Finance Committee, we looked for like a bandwidth of about three weeks to try to have this meeting, and we were struggling with that.
All right. What other comments do we have?
Okay. Just one other. As we live locally in November, I would ask that we look locally for the upkeep and maintenance of areas across town. One that comes to mind is the Independence Square area, which we continue to receive near daily reports about in regards to trash receptacles and litter pickup. And I know the staff has worked hard on that particular location, and the staff has many other things to do, but it seems to be, of all the challenging problems in Falls Church, one of the more intractable problems. And I don't really know what the, you know, solution is, but sometimes, you know, financial incentives will induce people to solve problems, so that's as much micromanagement as I want to contribute to at this juncture. The other area would be behind the West End Shopping Center, which seems to have neglected to receive any grass cutting since sometime in the spring. And I'm not sure who's responsible for that, Rite Aid, or West End Shopping Center proper, I think, is not where most of the overgrowth is. But, and there are a few other areas around town that, as we are all out on foot, I think we see more of now than maybe we did in another era, when we all hopped in our cars and commuted downtown. So I'd invite anybody else in the community to offer their suggestions and thoughts about how we might tidy ourselves up for the holidays.
All right. How about the minutes? Any comments to the minutes? One, all right.
Ms. Heath, line six, on the minutes? Line 67. His name is F.A.R.R.I. I know. Thanks.
Missed that one.
All right. Any other comments?
Line, Madam Clerk, on line 56, 57, Library Board of Trustees Annual Report, I think it's S apostrophe. And down there in that same line, 67, I think it is the Teachers S apostrophe Union, too.
I flunked that lesson.
Yeah. And on line 110, the council asked questions about and discussed in relation to, seems like there's a word missing, to the proposed school budget.
Okay.
to, seems like there's a word missing, to the proposed school budget. With those suggestions, I move to approve the minutes as corrected for the meeting of March 12th, 2018.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. You're abstaining. Okay, so Mr. Snyder's abstention, the rest are ayes. Okay, is there anything else, or are we ready to go into closed session? Okay, so we're going to go ahead. I'm going to read a motion upon a motion made by council member...
Connolly.
Seconded by council member...
Lipton House?
All right. And passed by a vote of city council. Council went in a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A 28 for discussion or consideration of information subject to the exclusion in subdivision 11 of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3705.6 for making such information public prior to entering into an interim or comprehensive agreement will likely adversely affect the financial interest or bargaining position of the public entity. Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lipton House?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Z?
Yes.
Tarter, yep. All right, it is 9:38. Why don't we take a short break, get the cameras and audio equipment taken down, and we'll reconvene in a couple minutes in closed
Duncan?
Seconded by council member...
Connolly.
And passed by a vote of city council. Council reconvened in open session. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Yes.
Councilor Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lipton House?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Z?
Yes.
Tarter, yes. All right, it is 10 something, or the 10:48.
Oh.
Certification, upon a motion made by council member...
Connolly.
Seconded by council member...
Z.
And passed upon affirmative roll-call vote in open session, it was certified that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting, meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session or meeting by the city council. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Yes.
Councilor Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lipton House?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Z?
Yes.
Tarter, yep. All right, is there anything else to be said tonight?
Mayor moved adjourn.
All right, it's planned. Let's do it. Good day.